How about everybody else?
I'll wait for the reading.
I now call to order the April 11th, 2019, meeting of the City of Nashua Planning Board. Mr. Secretary, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Donches. Mike Peterson.
Present.
Scott Leclair. Adam Varley.
Here.
Edward Weber. Here. Alderman David Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Mary Ann Mazzillagoya. Steve DuCrane. Dave Robinson.
Dave Robbins, present.
Robbins. Thank you. Jerry Pucci.
Present.
Gary.
Jerry. Maggie Harper. And that is it.
Thank you, and we have a quorum, and we have all regular members participating and voting. Next up on the agenda, we have consideration of approval of the minutes for the March 21st, 2019, meeting. Has anyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Mike, you might have been the only person that was here.
So moved.
Second.
David, were you here as well, then?
I wasn't, but I think I can still move a motion.
Yeah. Okay, so a motion to approve the minutes and seconded by Mr. Robbins. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'll throw it, even though it wasn't there. We can do that. There's nothing wrong with that.
I think we need at least a majority to...
Well, yeah, just because we weren't at the meeting, we can still vote for them.
You can still, if you've had an opportunity to typically people abstain, but if you've reviewed the minutes...
Just to get the motion through, I mean, they can always amend it if it's, if there's something wrong.
Right. It's just atypical that we don't have at least majority members. Would anyone else like to vote in favor so that we have...
Favor.
All right. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, two abstentions. All right, and the motion passes. Okay, invitations.
Good evening. In your folder tonight, you'll find we have an amended planning board agenda. We have some correspondence. At the last meeting, we tabled one of the cases to get a legal opinion, and in there you'll find some correspondence from Attorney Bolton, as well as some information from Mr. Maynard. Other business number three is a petition for street discontinuance, and that's been asked to be continued to our May 2nd meeting. And then also in your folder, the last thing is there's an addendum for capital improvements, and we had a meeting Monday, and I can speak to that at the time. So that's it.
Great. Thank you. Report of committee and liaison, Chairman, sorry, report of committee and liaison. Mr. Weber, do you have anything to report?
Yes. NRPC had a meeting, and they okayed the regional, what we're voting, what we have on the, what we normally vote, our year, what we have for, what we, our yearly cost, what we're proposing.
The capital improvements program?
Yeah, capital improvements, but they do that.
A regional capital improvement.
Yeah, regional capital improvements. HDC no meeting. If you couldn't make it.
No one objects, I will dispense with the reading of the procedure of the meeting. And I'll just move on to the agenda items. So, old business conditional special use permits, none. Old business subdivision plans, case number one, David M. and Pamela L. Peabody, owner, Carol A. Peabody, applicant. Proposed lot line relocation and two lot subdivision. Property is located at 58 Linton Street, Sheet 129, lots 251, 252, and 253. This is owned urban residence and located in Ward 7. And just to start, this application has been tabled from the prior meeting on March 21st, so the first thing I'll need is a motion to remove this item from the table.
I'll make that motion to take it...
Second. Motion by Mr. Pucci, seconded by Mr. Robbins to remove this application from the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Mr. Maynard, just for the benefit of everyone, as we didn't have several members here, the specific reason for tabling it was so that we could get further guidance from Corporation Council as to the correct classification of this plan, and specifically whether it was a subdivision plan and whether the sidewalk ordinance applied. So, all the planning board members, we did receive a letter from Steve Bolton, which hopefully you've all had a chance to review. As Linda indicated, there was also some additional correspondence that we've received this evening between Mr. Bolton and Mr. Maynard. And so, with that, Mr. Maynard, let you speak to this issue.
Just a quick, brief overview. We have three legal, non-conforming lots of record with lot line relocations being downgraded to two lots. So we're going from three existing lots of record to two lots by this essentially a lot line relocation plan. What I've also put up on the wall, in the middle of the short one, is our city tax map before the current tax maps, which shows the three individual lots before the, somebody ended up on the current tax map merging them all into one big lot, which is, which is under the RSA's, is an involuntary merger. And that has, through the RSA's, deemed to be improper because it did not have the concurrence of the property owner. RSA 674-1, 674-14, Roman numeral 1, defines subdivision as a division of a parcel of land into two or more lots, which tells you that you have to increase the number of lots to call it a subdivision. We are proposing less than, less lots than the three lots that exist. Mr. Bolton, Attorney Bolton uses the words re-subdivision, but it's, it's not in the RSA itself. The word re-subdivision is only used in a commentary on a court case regarding subdivisions. And in those brief notes, which are not the RSA, the word re-subdivision is used, but it's never used in the RSA itself, so the only, and in those notes, those advisory notes, the word re-subdivision was used when a developer wanted to reconfigure several lots into several different lots. As I said before, these are three legal, non-conforming lots of record. They were created in the early 1900s, they've been that way for decades, et cetera. Attorney Bolton was asked for a ruling, but it appears to me that instead of giving you a ruling, he advocated for a position, and was not acting as a neutral interpreter. He leaves the decision up to the judge, and in this case, it's the planning board that's acting as the judge. He's one advocate, I'm the other advocate, and that was not nearly what the intent was. No additional lots are being created. Therefore, as implied by Attorney Bolton's letter, no sidewalk contribution should be due. The only time we have sidewalks contributions required is when we're creating additional lots that didn't exist, more lots than what existed before. This is, we're not, this could be three individual houses on three legal, non-conforming lots of record. Attorney Bolton, in one of his pieces of correspondence, wants to claim that these lots of, or at least two of the lots on the right-hand side were merged. One, because there's a second driveway onto one of the empty lots, he considers that a form of merger, but that's, in my opinion, is ludicrous. Somebody wants access to his lot, his empty lot, he has to have a driveway onto it. The driveway for the house is on the right-hand side of the house. The other point he makes is that the house is into the side setback. Well, that's the current side setback. The house was built decades ago, and the fact that it might encroach into a setback is not a form of merger. If the house was over the lot line, yes, that's a form of merger, but encroaching into a setback is a violation, but not a voluntary merger. So therefore, in this particular case, the landowner, Mr. Peabody's, did not voluntary merge these, and we have insisted that they're three, excuse me, legal, non-conforming lots of record, and the assessor's map should have and should reflect that, as it used to before we went to the current maps and went on GIS, et cetera. That tax map I put up in the middle was probably in existence until the early 90s and before we started getting everything on GIS. So that, my point is, no new lots. We're going from three to two lots. We're not doing any additional lots. Therefore, under our regulations, under our ordinance, it's only a lot line relocation. Therefore, no sidewalk contribution should be required. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Maynard? Alderman Tenza.
Mr. Maynard, can you tell me the other...
Can you speak up, please?
Yeah, sure. The other parcels on Linton Street there, they don't have sidewalks?
No, there's no sidewalks anywhere in that whole neighborhood.
Okay. It looks like it's right in the area of Sunset Heights Elementary School, but...
Yeah, but that's neither hand or there regarding the ordinance.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand that, but...
The school is like a block and a half, two blocks away. Back of these lots is the school. But to get into the school, you have to go down a side street and go down two blocks.
And so there wouldn't be a need for sidewalks for, if children to live there, to access the school by a main road?
Yeah, but that's, it might be nice to have sidewalks in all these neighborhoods, but I live on South Main Street. Off of South, nowhere are there sidewalks. These are, all neighborhoods created in the 50s and 60s. And if there are sidewalk funds donated from other projects in this quadrant, the city can decide that there might be a necessity for, to do sidewalks at this school, but so far they haven't, except on South Main Street, there are no, there are no other sidewalks that have been contributed. And I would suggest to you that the amount of walking traffic from this neighborhood is minimal. But again, that's not relevant to the issue tonight. It's informative, but not relative.
Sure.
Mr. Pucci?
Yeah, just to confirm something I think I already know. The non-conforming lots would not be, would not be able to develop those lots without zoning relief, correct?
They're legal, non-conforming lots of record, they're buildable. So what happens is the zoning administrator will send somebody to the ZBA just to make sure. And what happens is they routinely...
Are they, do they comply with the zoning, the lots?
No, they're undersized. They're 5,000 square foot lots, whereas the neighborhood is 7,500.
Okay, so you couldn't build a house on those lots without zoning relief?
That's not correct, in my opinion.
How could you build, if there's...
They're legally created building lots. When they were created, they were building lots. Subsequent to that, the city changed the rules, the ordinance and the requirements for lots. If you look in the tax map of that neighborhood currently, there are numerous houses built on 50 by 100 lots in this neighborhood.
Since the ordinance required 7,500 feet?
Since the subdivision was approved.
But isn't there a window of time when a subdivision, Richard, let me ask the question, then you can answer, tell me I'm wrong. Isn't there, isn't there a period of time that you have to initiate developing the lot for that to apply? In other words, that just doesn't go on in perpetuity. If there's a subdivision or if the lots are defined, an effort has to be made to develop those lots within a window of time, or else, in order to keep the rules as they were when the lots were approved, isn't that right?
The word you're looking for is divest the lots, and there is no time period. What happens when you have a subdivision approved, you must make improvements towards that subdivision, which means you have to build the roads and get them accepted. Otherwise, these lots exist in perpetuity as building lots, because the original subdivision was approved and recorded, roads are built, therefore the subdivision is vested, the lots remain. You don't not have to build within a certain time period. There's no requirement whatsoever. The time period is to vest the subdivision by constructing the roads and utilities, but not, you don't not have to build a house in any time period. There are lots running out there that have been in existence for 100 years, and they're empty, and then all of a sudden, somebody decides, one of their relatives wants to build a house next door, they build a house. They do not require, there's no time period.
Okay, but what about the requirements, like setback requirements? Are the current rules applying to those lots? Are the rules from 1900 applying to those lots?
Well, in my opinion, the rules from 1900 should apply. However, in this community, the zoning administrator has said that the current zoning rules should apply for setbacks. And that usually is not a big deal. In my experience, 40 years doing this, it's never been a problem meeting current setbacks on legal, non-conforming lots. So that's the ruling here. If you don't like that ruling, then you appeal it to the zoning board. But most people don't bother to do that, they work with it. Okay.
Mr. Robbins?
Thank you. Mr. Maynard, if, and I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I'm gonna count on you and my colleagues to steer me through this. Am I correct in presuming that someone, the owners, could build three houses on these three lots right now?
Yes.
And that even though they are currently, they do not meet current standards for lot size, in your opinion, that wouldn't matter, they could, they could still build on them?
They would, yes. They would just build a small house, like many of the neighbors have done in this particular neighborhood.
Okay. So that they are combining the three lots into two, essentially they're subdividing the center lot and...
No, they're moving lot lines.
They're moving lot lines.
They're not subdividing anything.
I see.
They're moving lot lines.
And what's the impact of moving those lot lines? How many lots will...
It goes from three to two.
Okay.
And allows for a larger house on the larger creative building lot, but with the lot line relocation, with a garage.
Would they be able to do that without planning board approval?
No, you cannot move any lot line without planning board approval.
All right. So that they are changing lot configurations and coming to the planning board for approval, which is required for them to do that, and then assuming we approve it with whatever stipulations we have, and they agree, they can go forward. Is that correct?
What's the last sentence?
Assuming that we, the planning board approves their request, and that they accept any stipulations we place on their submittal, they can then go forward?
Correct.
Okay. Can you, can you tell me, I take it there's a dollar figure involved here? Do you have any sense as to how much that dollar figure is that's in question?
The dollar figure we're talking about is sidewalk construction, which is 5,000 some odd dollars.
Okay.
Contribution in lieu.
Contribution, okay. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Maynard? Well, I was just ordinarily, first of all, there's no one obviously here speaking in opposition or in support. Ordinarily, we would go into the public meeting, have deliberations, but given that, I suspect we're gonna need to have a further discussion with Mr. Maynard, I would suggest that we just have a discussion about the sidewalk issue among the board.
Why do we have to talk to Mr. Maynard?
We don't necessarily have, but, so, the issue ultimately, I think, is we're just the only remaining issue, unless other folks had questions remaining from the last meeting, is the issue of the whether we're going to apply, whether we think that the sidewalk ordinance applies, and in that case, whether we would grant a waiver request. But the waiver request is contingent upon the agreement of the applicant to make the contribution in lieu. So we're gonna need, I think, confirmation one way or the other for Mr. Maynard as to whether they are...
Well, we can ask him that question before we close the meeting.
Can I make one comment, please?
Yes.
My position is no sidewalk construction is required in this particular case. Therefore, the request for a waiver is not necessary. The only reason you had a waiver letter is because staff insisted we put that in. But my position is it doesn't apply. Sidewalks are not required, therefore, there's nothing to waive.
But what I'm getting at, Richard, is that depending on our discussion, the board may very well come to a different conclusion.
The board may come to the conclusion the sidewalk is required, and therefore you can entertain the waiver. Yes, I agree, that's, that could happen, too.
Right. What I'm just trying, what I'm suggesting is that if we came to that conclusion, you would presumably want to request the waiver, in which case, we would need to understand whether you were agreeable in that instance to making the contribution in lieu, which would be a necessary component of the waiver.
That's why we ended up putting in the letter, yes, but that's true. If you folks conclude through all this stuff that's before you, that sidewalks would ordinarily be constructed, required here, then I want you to then consider the waiver of sidewalks, because there are none whatsoever for hundreds and thousands of feet in this neighborhood. The nearest sidewalk is South Main Street, which is 2,000 feet away.
Okay, so...
If we don't decide to waive the sidewalk fee, and we decide that the plan should be approved with the sidewalk fee, would you, would that be acceptable to you, I think is what you're trying to ask?
Well, it has to be.
Okay. That's, we're just trying to get to that answer so that we can close the hearing.
I'm not saying it has to be acceptable or not necessarily agreeable, okay? Let's put it that way. I still have the right to appeal.
Of course.
And for whatever it's worth, this is an interpretation of the regulations, therefore it's potentially appealable to the ZBA, but anyway, as well as court, but whatever. I'm playing lawyer.
Okay, so should, why don't we just do this? I will close the hearing, we'll go into the public meeting. If we need to, we will reopen the hearing.
I understand.
So, with that said, I will just, for the record, ask the question, even though I know the answer. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak in opposition or concern? No. Is there anyone wishing to speak in support? No. This then concludes the hearing. We will now take your deliberations into the public meeting. The board does reserve the right to recall any party for further clarification. Okay. So, I think there's, there's really two different issues here. The first issue is, is this within the legal definition of a subdivision? And we have a letter from Attorney Bolton indicating that, at least in his view, that it does meet this definition of a subdivision because it is a re-subdivision. And contrary to what Mr. Maynard said, the word re-subdivision does in fact appear in the statutory language. And then, I think, sort of the second practical issue is, notwithstanding, you know, even if we were determined that it meets the technical definition of a subdivision, is there some other reason why we would say it doesn't apply in this particular circumstance because it's, you know, that the ordinance wasn't intended to apply here? And so, I think those are the two questions before us. I will just quickly state my views on it, and then I'd like to hear from all of you. I think that it meets the technical definition, the statute, just based on the fact that it does include the word re-subdivision, and based on Attorney Bolton's letter, and then the further correspondence. Second, I think that, Jerry, I think as you were getting at, I mean, the question to me practically is, what is the purpose of this, of this plan? And to me, if the purpose of the plan is to create an opportunity to build on a new, on a quote-unquote "new" lot, and to sort of obtain the benefit of, of the subdivision statute, and to create an opportunity to build on that lot, that practically, as well as technically, meets the definition, and to me, that means that the sidewalk ordinance applies. But with that said, I would welcome other comments. Mr. Pucci?
Yeah, I actually spent a lot of time on this, reviewing this, and I handed out this municipal association document that pretty clearly articulates that there's a middle, right in the middle of this, it makes a conclusion that thus all lot line adjustments, being subdivisions, may be subject to planning board regulation and review. So they refer to lot line adjustments as subdivisions. So I kind of ask myself, you guys know how I feel about this sidewalk contribution thing, but I kind of go back to, what's the intent of that rule? Why do we do that? Even though some of us don't agree with it, the idea is that if you're increasing the use of the property, the area, then you should contribute to its development, even if it's not directly in front of the house. That was the whole standard that this was based on. Actually, Mr. Maynard kind of made, said something that kind of changed my mind a little bit. I was under the impression that the two other lots couldn't be built on without zoning relief, but that's not apparently true. That he could, you could develop the non-conforming lots, provided they comply with, with the other requirements. So then, you're kind of looking at a situation where the possible intensity of this property is actually being reduced. It's not being increased. Somebody subdivide, I'm gonna be having a subdivision come before, it's a single lot, it's a lot with a house on it, it's gonna be divided into two lots. It's increasing the intensity of the use in the neighborhood. This is actually decreasing it. It's actually going from three potential houses to two. And looking at it that way, whatever the, whatever the technical terms are that cause the planning department to put this forward this way, if the applicant is decreasing the intensity of use on the property, it seems hard to justify that they should have, that they're gonna add a burden to the sidewalk, to the need for a sidewalk in the area. So based on that logic, I would say it wouldn't be fair to apply it, because the reason we apply it is because it's increasing intensity, and this is actually decreasing it. So that, that would be my position. That would be a good reason if, if we wanted to, which we certainly have the authority to, not apply this on this lot. That would be a good reason not to apply it. The intensity is actually being decreased. So, that's kind of, I could be, I get out of that, but that's the way I'm seeing it. Sir Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I was, as you were talking, I was coming a little bit to a different conclusion with what you were saying. There is, I, I have to presume that there is a financial benefit for the owners in going from three lots to two lots, and building on two larger lots, as opposed to hypothetically building three small houses on three lots. And I don't know what the owners have in their mind as to what they're doing. I don't necessarily think that there would be a reduction in intensity. If, if one had two, three bathroom houses, or two, three-bedroom houses as opposed to three, two-bedroom houses, the intensity level would not change. And as Mr. Maynard said, right now, the lots would support or could support smaller houses. So, I don't, I don't know one way or another. I think that's, that's an unknown, but it certainly is an interesting question. What I also took out of this was that the, there is a financial incentive, or I'm presuming a financial incentive for the owners to do this. They, as a result, by coming to the board and requesting our action, they will be getting something more out of this than they would if they didn't come to the board. They would be increasing the value of their investment or what have you. Is that something that we should take into consideration? And I'm still thinking about that. I don't know.
I would just say that everybody who develops land is doing it to make money. Very, very rarely would somebody, in any circumstance, come before us that doesn't have a financial gain to it.
I would, I would, I would tend, I would tend to agree that that's probably true in almost all cases.
Sure.
But I, I, I don't, I don't know.
I'm just pointing that out.
Yeah, no, no, I, I hear you.
Yeah, I would, though, I think draw a distinct distinction. I mean, Jerry, as you talked about this, this middle provision from the, this Q and A from the Municipal Association, you know, talks about sort of the, the case where there's a true lot-line adjustment. You know, you know, property owners agree that the, you know, the line jogs the wrong way or something, so they want to correct it. And, you know, that's technically within the meaning of the subdivision statute. But are you going to treat it the same as, as another type of subdivision that's, that's more substantive? And I, and I do think, in this case, we're talking about more than just, just adjusting a line.
Sure.
And I guess the way I look at it is, sort of, Mr. Robbins, to your point, it's, I presume that it's not economically viable to develop the lots the way they are now, since they've sat undeveloped for all this time. And so, again, that gets back to my, sort of, and this is more of a practical point than, than a legal one, but the reason presumably for the subdivision is to make an economically viable, developable lot. And so, again, the applicant is taking advantage of the, the opportunity to create, you know, that, that new lot again, so that it can be, you know, viably developed. I mean, at the same time, Jerry, I mean, I think your, your point is well-taken that, you know, if, if the applicant so chose, assuming that Mr. Maynard is correct about, you know, whether zoning relief is required, is not required, you know, the lots could be developed, and I think, you know, it is important to take that into consideration. But again, it ultimately seems to me that there's, that where the applicant is recognizing a benefit here, that I think at least we could legitimately say the sidewalk ordinance does apply, and we are to request you either to comply with it or seek a waiver. Having said all that, I, I would, I could be persuaded the opposite. And if, if the board was leaning the other direction, I would, I would support that, that inclination as well.
Just to be clear, I think it's a subdivision. I mean, I'm not questioning that. After reading this summary, I think by all intent, for all intent and purposes, it should be treated like a subdivision. I'm not, I'm not questioning that piece of it at all.
Mr. Weber, and then Oliver Muntanza?
My opinion, subdivision, I've been here for, and this is a subdivision plan, should be treated like a subdivision plan, no matter what anybody else thinks. It's a subdivision plan. It's got lot-line relocation, and it's a subdivision. Clear and simple to me.
Oliver Muntanza?
And I agree that it is a subdivision. And I'm just looking at the, at the ordinance, and to Mr. Pucci's point, you know, I don't see anything in the, any language in the ordinance about how the subdivision is going to affect an area, and whether it'll intensify the amount of traffic or not intensify it. So, I mean, in my opinion, I think it's a slippery slope if we start trying to make these determinations about, you know, which subdivisions the ordinance applies to. You know, as the applicant mentioned, we could be wrong on the subdivision determination, and, you know, but I think at this point, based on the information we have, I think it's pretty clear. It is a subdivision, and the, either sidewalks or the contribution in lieu of sidewalks should apply.
Can I speak to that for a second? If I'm not cutting you off?
Nope, I'm not done.
This is the biggest bone of contention I have with the interpretation of this. I don't think that, that that ordinance says that at all. The ordinance empowers this board to control that fee for each individual applicant as we see fit. The ordinance, that, that is not a rule that says you're supposed to collect this money on this, on all subdivisions. It's a rule that says if these things, if these circumstances are met, the planning board can accept the fee in lieu of payment. But it's completely within our discretion, and the amount that we accept is within our discretion. So, I wasn't referring to the ordinance that laid out the reason we collect the money. I was referring to the discussion we had, the meeting we had, on why we even do this. And what the, what the motive is. Because, I'll say again, I think it's very unfair, and I don't even think it's a legal thing to do. I, I think it's an impact fee, and I think the city is not following the rules to impact fees. That's my personal opinion of this. But in our discussion, we, the reasoning that we used to apply this was because it impacts, it adds, it increases the intensity of use in the area when you subdivide the land, and that affects the surrounding areas, and that's the justification for, for applying this fee. So, I, I wasn't trying to say that the ordinance says that. That was just the reasoning behind collecting it.
But just to delve into that a little further, I mean, it seems to me that if you were looking at sort of a different circumstance, let's say it was a larger subdivision, and we've had a couple of those come before us in the last few years. You know, within the subdivision, I don't think there'd be any debate that the, that number one, that the sidewalk ordinance would apply. And ordinarily, we would not request for a waiver if you had, say, a 30, 35 lot subdivision. And I think the justification there is that it's, it's a matter of safety and, you know, pedestrian access, that you want to require the developer of the land to include sidewalks within the subdivision. I think the exception is recognizing that there are circumstances where that rationale doesn't apply. And, you know, we see this a lot with, you know, the two or three lot subdivisions where, you know, there's existing development. It's not, you know, virgin land that's being subdivided and creating lots of new lots. It's existing development, and there are no sidewalks within that area. So, it's not so much a question of the intensity of the use, but it's a recognition that there are circumstances in which because of the surrounding development, it may be because of the lack of intensity of use, that there is not a just, same justification for sidewalks. But at the same time, because the developers is, is, you know, availing themselves of the opportunity to develop that land, that we still believe that they should, you know, contribute in some way. And so, this is sort of an opportunity to say, well, we won't make you build the sidewalks because there's not really justification in this particular location. But you can contribute instead, and we can build sidewalks in another location. So, it's not necessarily the, the intensity of the use in that location.
You know, I end up being the arguer in this all the time. But that's exactly what an impact fee is. That's an impact fee.
Okay.
Okay? And then my argument to the city was that there are very specific rules statutorily to apply impact fees. And if you do it wrong, like Londonderry did, it can cost the town or the city millions of dollars because they were collecting these fees, and they were applying them in a, in a different way. And they got nailed on it, they got sued on it, and it cost them a ton of money. And Hudson had problems in the same way, but it didn't cost them that much money. Pelham had problems in the same way. So, my, my concern with this is that it's an impact fee. The way we do it is an impact fee. But we're not following the impact fee rules. We're making our own rule for this. That's my concern. To me, Adam, what you just described, it was exactly what an impact fee is.
Well, I think...
Exactly.
I think we're getting a little far afield. And I don't know that, I don't think we should be making legal conclusions about, I understand your concern. But I don't think we should be making legal conclusions about whether it's an impact fee and whether it meets the requirements for an impact fee. The reality is, is that this ordinance and the exception have existed for a long time. And, you know, as far as I can tell, they've, the exception has existed successfully. And I don't, I'm not in a position to be able to say whether it's an impact fee or, or not. But I think that's sort of beyond the scope of what we're talking about here tonight. I just...
The RSA's actually put the burden on planning boards to determine that, though. That is part of what we're supposed to determine. It is, it's our job to say that. We're the ones who are supposed to turn around and say to the city, if you're going to do this, you have to do it this way. You have to follow this rule. That's part of our job, as far as I'm concerned. It's, it doesn't go to Steve Bolton to do that. Steve Bolton is the attorney for the city. It, it goes to us to say, you have to follow this law, this, the right way. So, I don't want to argue because I always feel like I'm beating a dead huss on this. Someday, somebody will take us to court, and a judge will decide if, if it is what it is.
Well, it sounds like a great topic for discussion for the next meeting on May 9th.
We have...
We did have that.
We've already had this workshop. And it's been thoroughly vented, and we know what our guidelines are. And we, as long as we follow those guidelines, we're all set. Now, we have made adjustments from that guidelines because we are a body, and we have the ability to adjust that. But mainly, we go by a certain regimental guidelines. And I think if we stray from those guidelines, we can get into more trouble. If we don't stay within our guidelines.
How are we going to get into trouble? We have complete discretion to apply that fee however we choose.
Right, I know that, just, I'm just saying.
I mean, we can, we can apply it to one application and not the next application. It's not causing us any trouble.
No, but I'm saying, we can't, we can't get into trouble if we, if we continually change everything because we're going to get people coming before us and say, well, why did that person get it and I don't?
Yeah, I think we should try, what we've tried, talked about in the past, and what I think is advisable for us to do, is to try to apply a rule consistently.
Yes.
Or, you know, in recognizing that, you know, there may be some unusual circumstances that may justify reconsideration in a particular case. But in general, we should at least be applying sort of a consistent framework to decide how the rule is being applied. And so, to me, the only question here is whether, you know, whether the ordinance applies in the first instance. And then if it does, whether the, you know, applicant meets the, the criteria for a waiver. You know, and if we, if we were to say either no, the subdivision regulation doesn't apply, it's not a subdivision, or it technically meets the definition, but we think is a practical matter, it doesn't, it doesn't, you know, fit within the circumstances where, you know, the ordinance was meant to apply, then that's, that's, to me, a reason for departing from the general rule. But if neither of those things is the case, then, Mr. Weber?
I'll make a motion unless somebody objects.
Well...
Unless somebody has something further to discuss. Anybody else have anything else to discuss?
Well, may I just comment?
Yes, yes, please, discussion.
Well, there are two things we're looking at. And according to the New Hampshire Municipal Association, a lot-line is apparently considered, a lot-line adjustment is apparently considered a subdivision. So, we're going to treat it as a subdivision. That's question one. And then question two, whether the sidewalk ordinance applies in this case. It's a long-established neighborhood with no sidewalks. And, but you'd have to look at the letter of the law to see how the ordinance is worded, to see if it applies to a blank neighborhood where there are no sidewalks.
Been there all along.
So, that's the question I think we're facing. What did the ordinance actually say?
Yeah, I think once, if you say it is a subdivision, and we say not only does it technically meet the requirement, but we think it's within the scope of the subdivision regulation, then the sidewalk ordinance applies.
Okay.
But then there's a second question of, does the applicant meet the criteria to be eligible for the waiver?
Right.
And I think, I think we're in agreement that they meet the criteria for, for a waiver.
Yep, I do.
Okay.
Anybody else? Can I make a motion? Anybody object to me making a motion?
Well, I think you can make a motion even if people object.
Good, make a motion. Okay. New business, number one, subdivision plan, 58 Lutton Street. That the plan meets NRO 138G with three waivers. The first, request for waiver 190-282B9, which requires physical features in the site within 1,000 feet, is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and ten of the regulation. Two, request for waiver 190-221C, which requires underground utilities, is granted, will not be contrary in spirit and ten of the regulation. Three, request for waiver 190-212A1, which requires a sidewalk be located on at least one side of the street, is granted, and finding the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and ten of the regulation. And the applicant has agreed to make a contribution of $5,700 in lieu of sidewalk construction pursuant to 190-212D2. Payment will be made prior to recording the plan. And four through nine as written.
Okay, motion by Mr. Weber is to approve new business number one, subdivision plan, finding that it meets the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO section 190-138G, the total of nine stipulations, the first three being waiver requests, all reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and ten of the regulation, with stipulation number three indicating a contribution of $5,700. And then four through nine is written in the staff report. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Oliver Muntanza. Is there further discussion? Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, folks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot there by saying that's an impact fee.
No, no, it's not so much that. I just, I just took one of those, you know, sets up. Okay. Old business site plans, none. New business conditional special use permits, none. New business subdivision plans, none. New business site plans, case number two, has been postponed at the September 12, 2019 meeting. Other business, case number one, review of tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. Has anyone had a chance to review the tentative agenda?
I haven't. I don't see anything in here.
Would you like to make a motion to that event?
Make a motion that there is no regional impact.
A motion by Mr. Weber that having reviewed the agenda, the tentative agenda, there are no proposals of regional impact. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Robbins. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Case number two, referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed amended O-19-038, amending the sign ordinances relative to address numbers on ground signs.
Can we get a clarification? I just, sorry, I just...
Didn't we have a whole presentation on this? Didn't Sarah, somebody come and talk to us about this?
Yes. I can speak to it. On, I think on March 7, the planning board gave a favorable recommendation on this ordinance. However, I think it went to the Board of Aldermen and they have referred it back to the PEDC and the planning board with a change to it. To, I guess before it was, the sign had to be a minimum of four inches in height and now they're also gonna have a maximum of eight inches in height, which is being added. And then my, my understanding is the other change is that the total square footage is not to exceed 10 square feet. And that's the changes that they're proposing. And then it's gonna be going back, I guess, to PEDC next week for a hearing on it. So they're asking for a favorable recommendation on just those two minor changes.
So the four inches, eight inches, that's the size of the lettering? Is that what that is?
Correct. For the, just for the addressing.
If I may, so I'm sure in her presentation, Director Marchant said there, people have been complaining that on the large signs, especially on the main corridors like Tanyan Wester Highway and Amherst Street, the, when people were erecting the signs, they didn't necessarily have to put the numbers on them. So when someone says, please show up at 300 Main Street, you know, they don't know that's the Shaw's Plaza or something like that. So this ordinance would require them to do that for any new signage. Some of the Aldermen had concerns that just, just saying a minimum height of four inches that would open it up to people creating even larger signs and there'd be more pollution of signs along the main corridor. So the discussion, the robust discussion about this at PEDC was to limit just, just the numbers or lettering to 10 square foot of the signage, which would not count towards the overall 300 square feet of the sign. There was even, some folks tried to limit it even more, but the 10 square feet was the compromise that we came up with.
So basically, the idea is you have to put the address on there, but you didn't want to create an incentive or an opportunity to make, you know, expand the sign, size of the sign significantly, yes?
Correct. And it's just, it's just the lettering. I mean, they could decide whether they want the whole address or just the, just the numerical address.
Did anybody consider making it, that everybody had to add that to their sign, whether it's existing or not? Was that a discussion at all?
That was not a discussion at PEDC.
No. Some towns do. They've done that.
Well, if this passes, it'll have to be for any, any new signs that are put up, so...
The problem with that, though, if you put it post, is now you have undue, it's a good idea to all of them, but it's undue burden on the business community if they have it. That's, I think that's why they didn't. It's an undue, you know, you don't want to be negative to your business community. But most businesses, if they want to have people coming to their place, would do it.
Well, it looks good to me.
Yeah, I agree.
I make a motion that we approve it. It's a good idea.
So, motion by Mr. Rupucci to make a favorable recommendation...
Yes.
...as to O-19-038 as amended. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Robbins. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Other business, case number three, referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed petition for street discontinuance proportion of Lakeside Avenue. So as Linda indicated, we have, we've received a request to defer our consideration of this particular item until our next meeting. Does anyone have any concerns about doing that? So, that I would just ask for a motion to table this item until our next meeting? Motion by Mr. Robbins to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rupucci. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. And other business, case number four, amendment to the fiscal year 2020 capital improvement program, amending three items. And Linda, you're gonna speak to this as well?
So this past Monday night, we had a special meeting of the capital improvements to rank three items, which we ranked as A3. The reason why we had to have the meeting was because these items were on the capital improvements, however, they weren't for fiscal year 2020. So they weren't ranked. And because of the need for, with the police station, they need to get new windows as soon as possible. So that's why they came back, so they can go ahead and proceed with that. And then the other projects were the Mines Falls Hydro Dam and the Jackson Falls, the Midro Falls Hydro Dam turbine, it's not working. So they need to get that repaired. So they brought that forward to get funding for that for fiscal year 2020. And at the same time, because of that problem, they also brought the Jackson Falls as well. So we met Monday night and we ranked them and we gave them A3 ratings. So we're asking that the planning board give a favorable recommendation so we can go ahead and send that forward. Thank you.
Mr. Weber?
What are the conditions of both dams? Is it, does it have a rating as far as its condition?
I honestly don't know. At the presentation, the waterways manager came and spoke to it. From my, what I understand, the Mines Falls is not functioning at all right now, the turbine.
Okay.
So...
The reason I'm asking this, one of the, that's going on June 1, about three years ago, they talked about the necessity of the problems with municipalities purchasing dams in their area. And it is very important that, that's one of the questions I would recommend asking, the condition of it.
But the city already owns these dams, I think.
They do, but if those conditions aren't maintained, the city can be liable for a great deal of money. If it's not maintained in a really good, there's problems down the road. And that's one of the highlights of that June, going up to Concord and going and sitting and listening to the problems. And so that's why I'm bringing it up. I would, I would ask that question.
I'll pass it on to the waterways manager.
At least from the descriptions here, though, it sounds like it's just the turbines, it's not the dams themselves.
Right. It's always good to have a report of the condition of the dam besides just that the turbine isn't working. It's important that it be inspected and I'm sure that he would be inspecting it yearly, if not more, and just finding the condition, how the conditions are. Because we don't, I don't think anybody wants to have problems down the road or downstream.
Just quickly, I mean, I know that, just to say on the record, that the Mines Falls Hydro Turbine, I believe it generates revenue for the city.
It does.
So it's important that it's up and running and working efficiently. And also, you know, we're gonna be, the city's gonna be hopefully investing a lot of money in the HVAC system at the police department as well. And clearly, you know, windows are a big part of that system working efficiently and not wasting money by heat and air conditioning going right out the window, so...
So do we sell the power from those dams, then?
We do and there's a, I don't, I don't know enough about it, but we sell power now and I think the city is hoping that a change in Concord in the next couple of years will allow us to sell even more and make, generate more money from that.
One more, just to add to your power. Part of our wastewater treatment plan has purchased two generators. And they are converting, or will be converting, energy to the system through the use of the wastewater, converting it to a methane and then converting it into a power. So, yeah, we need that.
Well, I mean, certainly seems like these are important projects and reasonable request to move these up the list. Does anyone else have any questions, concerns, or different views, or?
No.
Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve the amendment, the addendum as presented?
Motion by Mr. Rupucci to approve the amendments to the capital improvements plan for fiscal year 2020. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Discussion items?
Yes, I actually have to amend my report because I forgot one thing that came about at the meeting and that was...
Oh, well, yeah, I guess it's fine.
I'm just gonna just tell you, it's not a big, big item. Eversars came in and put a thing about what they're gonna be doing across their pipe, they're gonna add a pipeline, gas pipeline, so that it will actually be so much better that it's gonna give us, so that it's, it can make, there's more gas feed. It's coming out of Canada, across from Maine, going across the state. So it was a really good discussion that they're improving the gas works and the availability of natural gas to the state.
Any other discussion items? Alderman Tenza?
So, hopefully, in the capital improvements budget this year, for the city budget, there is money for a, for us to start another master plan. $200,000 is what's put in there now and hopefully that will stay. I think there's a lot of support for it and everyone realizes that planning board zoning, everyone's looking for some guidance as to what folks in the city, how they would like the city, the city develops. So hopefully that passes in June and then we can get working on that early next year.
Is that enough money to do it?
For the next year, it is apparently. So...
It seems like the kind of thing that you either do right or it's a waste of time.
Well, in, hopefully the thinking is, well, we've invested, we've already started to, you know, invest in it and we don't want to waste that money going forward.
You're committed then, yeah?
Yes.
Good. That'd be great.
That's a big step forward.
Yeah? Okay.
I'll add to that, it's registration, everybody, June 1. Take a look at it. I've already registered. If you guys got a chance, go for this. It's gonna be a very educational thing. It's got a power pack of a lot of information there. And one of the things is, like, Mr. Rupucci would love to know about the legal update session. You might want to go to that. I thought that was cool.
Just trying to look out for the city.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's where, it is important and that's one of the things that you could actually, it's on your mind and it, and one of the things they do, they love to have people input and that's one of the things I would...
I've been to them.
Yeah. No, I mean, I would ask that question there. Get a lot of people to understand and they'll, you're gonna get a lot more feedback.
There isn't any place in the city, in the state that has a sidewalk fee like we do. So it wouldn't be very productive.
Ever know. ZBA making process. If you look at the topics, there's a lot of good topics there.
All right.
Okay.
Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Someone?
Motion by Mr. Robbins to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes and we adjourned at 8:06.